Okay, everybody, it's time for us to get started. This is June 21st, and this is our second time for meeting in person. And the main thing that I'd like to do today is answer any questions you have about homework two. Talk a little bit about the structure of the course in terms of what's going to be, do, when, when our exam's going to be. And also to do some preparation in terms of studying together for test one. You have this, it's online, it's test one study guide, I'm just going to hand it to everybody. And I'm hopeful today to cover the six proofs that I said are things you should know for test one, and that I was trying to at least narrow down some of the material that you should definitely be prepared to do for the exam. And it turns out, Warren, for the Taylor's theorem, I have two mistakes in the videos for the Taylor's theorem's proof, and so I want to correct those. One of them I think of as a substantial mistake, the other one is, well, it's still a mistake, there's two mistakes, okay? We will look at that. Okay, so I'm ready to get started. So we have homework one, okay? Homework two. Does anybody want to ask anything about homework two? Anybody want to ask any questions about homework two?
I still think it's not specifically to homework two, but has to do with it a little bit. The notation for the Riemann stillness, I still having some problem with that. Like, I understood it for homework two, I think because of the theorem with the unit step function, I was able to do that okay, but I don't know if we had some polynomial or something more complex, if I would understand the notation and how to work it.
Okay. And so, we do have some examples where we're working with Riemann stillness integrable functions in the homework. So the two, the first problem has two parts.
Well, and I, and I understand if we're actually solving a problem with it, I guess is where I'm having a difficulty, if we're computing something.
Okay. And so, those, what you said was one, okay, Chris? And the way that I think about, about this is that it's abstract setting in which we're describing how to do a Riemann still disintegrable, and what you're saying is, how about some specific examples? So for using the definition, it's tough. Using a definition is hard to do. And so what we do is we build up the theorems to help us be able to do Riemann still disintegration. Now, in problems one A and B, we have some specific examples where I, the intention was is that you would use the definition of Riemann still disintegrable. Chris, look, before I move on, you asked me the question, so I won't make sure it's okay to me. Could you do problems one A and B?
We worked on them together, and I understood how, I understood how we went through it and how we used the definition.
Okay, so we had those summations, upper sums, and yeah, and the fimum of the upper sums and things of that nature, and making sure everything was the same. And in problem, one of the problems, I guess it's problem four, let me make sure that I'm talking about the right problem. Oh, just like problem two, problem three. It's problem five. You're also given a specific function and asked to show that it's not Riemann integrable, which means it's not Riemann still disintegrable with respect to alpha being equal to x.
Well, that was still a step function, though.
That is not quite a step function, the, but it has a bunch of movements just between two output values like that.
Right, right.
Okay, and so I understood your question, I'm getting to it. Okay, so definition wise, Chris, it's hard to use, okay? Here's what we have, in terms of calculating things. So we have this theorem, and it's called the fundamental theorem of calculus. And it is for a specific Riemann still disintegrable, the Riemann integral, okay? And we're going to talk a little bit more about this in just a few minutes. And this is part two. Okay, what does it say? It says, let f be a real function on A to B with, and we, I don't tell you, you don't have, this all in your notes today. There's very, there's going to be only a few times I say, you should write this down. If you want to write down something, that's great. But we're taking it, and this is in your notes, so if you want to concentrate on this, that's fine, if you want to write it down, that's fine, whatever you want to do. But, so we have this real value function on A to B with f being Riemann integral on A to B. And suppose m is a function such that f prime, being at prime, equals the little f. Then, what we have is the m from A to B of big F, I'm sorry, of little f, d x, is equal to big M of v minus big F of beta. So that's something I like to prove, we have proven it, okay? And this is something of the theorems that I want you to know, okay? And Chris, I'm going to work on proving that a little bit later on in our session today, okay? However, Chris was asking, well, how do I do these Riemann still disintegrals? Okay, and I didn't do, you know, with a few examples. So that theorem helps us. And then, there's another theorem that we proved, and I want to write it down here that has to do with Riemann still disintegrability and computation, okay? Wait just a second. Here's another important theorem. It says, assume, so this is something we've reproved, assume alpha increases monotonically, and alpha prime is Riemann still disintegrable on A to B. Let f be a bounded function that takes on real values on A to B. Then, it says, f is Riemann still disintegrable function with respect to alpha, if and only if f alpha prime is Riemann integral, Riemann integral, and in this case, the m from A to B of f d alpha is equal to the m from A to B of f of x, alpha prime x, d x. So using the definition, Chris, we can only do a few functions in terms of, a few types of functions in terms of their Riemann still disintegrable, okay? They're, using that definition is tough to work with, with that sum. So we got theorems to help us out, okay? And even though I didn't really do very much with these theorems, first of all, for the fundamental theorem of calculus, and you notice in our book, and for graduate classes just in general, we say, here's the abstract idea, and we may give just one or two examples, and we're kind of relying on the fact that you have experience with some of this. Chris, if I were to ask you an example, and not just you, but anybody, don't worry, I won't answer the question, we're not supposed to play about this, why we don't keep doing things like that. I just want to get people involved. If I ask you, what's the integral, let's say, from zero to one of x squared d x? Okay, this is a Riemann integral, okay? And so this fundamental theorem of calculus says, well, if you could find some function, if you could find some function for x squared such that its derivative, if you find some function such that its derivative is x squared, then you can evaluate that function at one, subtract from that what you get to zero, and that's the answer to this integral, that's fundamental theorem of calculus. So here's what we normally do, we find the antiderivative for this guy, what would that be? Can anybody give me an antiderivative for x squared? X to the third over three. And we write down this bar, and we evaluate from zero to one, okay? I mean, this is something we learned in Cal II, is that okay? I'm not trying to say anything spectacular. That, the theory is what we're interested in for this class. And so this is equal to one-third minus zero, okay? Please, fair with me. I know what question, question you said, well, I didn't ask about the Riemann integral, I asked about the Riemann stillness, okay? Well, this fact helps us, helps us calculate some Riemann still disintegrable, okay? So let us look at, someone says, okay, we want you to integrate, we want you to integrate some function, let's see, let's say I want you to integrate e of x d, and here I'm going to write down x squared from zero to one, okay? Somebody said, now that is a Riemann still disquestion, okay? And people say, well, I don't know. Now, I'm going to be looking at some sums that has the soup of e to the x over the intervals, the subintervals when we're dealing with a partition, times the change in the alpha, which in this case is x squares, of the partition points, okay? The difference from consecutive partition points. And we're looking at that sum, we're going to talk about ins and soups of it, and are they the same? Mess. And, so we don't do that. What we do is we try to use this theorem, what's this theorem say that I can do? This theorem says, well, as long as this guy is increasing, and when I think of x squared on zero to one, okay, x squared, it looks like the referee's arm for now that I'm running back against the ball. It's going up here to the left, is that okay with everybody? That means it's increasing, is that okay? Okay, so it's increasing, and, and, so it's increasing, and x squared is deriv, is differentiable. What's its derivative? It's 2x, okay? And 2x is going to be Riemann integral on zero to one, where I'm talking about. How do I know 2x is Riemann integral on, on zero to one? I'm going to tell you. Because 2x is continuous, and any continuous function is going to be Riemann integral, and Riemann still disintegrable, okay? Okay, that's what we have. Okay, so here, I can say, this is the same thing as the integral from A to, from zero to one, zero to one, of, it would be e to the x times the derivative, 2x d x. Is that okay? And now I worry about trying to find an antiderivative for that guy, and I can evaluate, Chris. So I turn the Riemann still disintegrable, and at least this case, in this type of setting, into a Riemann integral that we can handle, is that okay with everybody? So that's what that theorem gives us. So Chris, when you said, well, I'm not comfortable, no, most people are uncomfortable, we try to get away from using that definition. The only reason I gave you problems with the definition of Riemann still disintegrable, the only reason I gave you that definition, because we don't need to know what it is, we need to know from that how we get other forms or facts that we can compute things with. But I know I didn't give you any computational problems that really involve this, but that's what we do, is that okay? And we stay away from computing using the definition, computing these intervals using their definitions, except for the simplest of cases. And we build up facts that can help us handle harder cases from the definition, but they're facts from the definition, we're concentrating on the facts from the definition. Is it okay what I said?
Yeah, I think, I don't know, at least for me, that in order to use the theorems and the definitions, I don't know, like, that helped me clear up a lot.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad. So that's the reason for this, this problem, okay? I mean, this theorem, that's a, an example of where we use this theorem. Is that okay with everybody? Good, it's a good thing to ask about. And in general, I know that I'm not giving a lot of examples, part of the homework is to get you to look at things that would be examples from the abstractness of the content. And also, in graduate school, it's kind of, we give a little, one or two examples, and that's just what we do, we go from there. Okay, Chris, is it okay what I said? Good, and if it's not okay, you say, it's not okay, wait a minute, give me some more and say, it's okay, it's, it's okay for anybody. All right, that's what I got for you on that definition. If, that was a general question, and that's a good question to ask. Are there questions about things from the homework that you said, please? Anything you'd like to say?
Number seven, I'm ready. So basically, you gave us the alpha was basically seven of those step functions?
Three of them, yep.
So let's split that up into like an alpha one, and alpha two, and alpha three.
Excellent.
Okay, then I looked at the definition, what, we had a theorem where if it was the integral of alpha one plus alpha two, it's like the integral of an alpha one plus the integral of the other, okay?
That's exactly what I needed to.
All right, and then we also had a definition where you have to have a constant, you can pull the constant out.
Exactly what I did.
And we also had this, it was x minus s, and it's just f x that s.
Exactly.
Okay. What I got a bit confused on is when I split it up into the alpha one, alpha two, alpha three, like, let's look at alpha two, was like two times you have i of x minus this.
That's right.
I'm confused a little bit as when we were to compute it, that would just be like two ti, would this be two times f x two?
Yes.
Okay, I was confused why it'd be two times f two, not one-half f x two.
Why it's not one-half?
Right, because I was thinking that I had to add alpha two, which is that step function, that I'd have to solve that one-half of alpha two would just be the step function and not that constant, and that one-half would be the constant I could pull out of the derivative.
Okay, so I didn't follow it so well. So, here, essentially, you get down to this part. Okay, so this part of the problem, right? So I think it's from zero to three, is that right?
Yeah.
And so it was f, which was x squared or whatever it was. And then you're looking at your d alpha sub two.
Right.
Okay, so here's what I write, that d alpha sub two, I'd say, I'm worried it's terrible, I'm over here, this is, this is from zero to three, I think it's going to be f for the alpha sub two.
The alpha sub two was two times i of x minus this.
Okay, thank you very much, Warren. And so then we had that theorem that you mentioned accurately, that I can pull out the, so that's zero to three, two times f d i of x minus two. So that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Now I'm just looking at this part, two is two.
We're good?
We're good. Good. Two is two, and now I'm looking at that, that rest of part, and that other theorem that you mentioned.
See, I thought it only when the alpha was equal to just that function, so then I thought the constant had to be on the alpha and not on the function of what alpha was equal to, that makes sense.
No, say it again.
I thought that, let's say alpha sub two would have been two times i x minus one. So then I would have solved, so just the step function by itself, so I thought that one-half alpha two would be i of x minus one, or i x minus two, whatever, if that goes to. Because I thought, I guess when I was reading the theorem, I thought that the step function had to be by itself before it was just the f of the s, and that's where I got confused, I thought it would have been one-half, but, the way you wrote it up.
It's okay. Well, look, this statement, I mean, is true, you could say it's one-half alpha is equal to this.
Right, right.
That is true.
But then I, when I wrote my integral, I pulled out the one-half instead of one half of the two, which, but I got it.
Okay.
The way you wrote it up from top makes much more sense.
Okay, good. So we're good with that, that's good to ask about, okay? What else do we want to see done? Anything from the homework? Don't worry, I got planning, I won't go through those proofs, I got plan, and I didn't, you know, in reviewing the MeVag theorem, not the MeVag theorem, the Taylor's theorem, there's something wrong in what I wrote, so we're going to have to correct something in terms of the lectures, the video lectures. Two things. Anybody else with anything from the homework? Has everybody got the homework? I had said, you know, if you need more time, it's okay. Do we need more time?
Just a little bit.
Okay, so Monday or Tuesday or something like that? One, Monday's okay? Jackie, it's okay? Okay, and let me ask this, in terms of those of you who want a little bit more time, how are you going to get the homework finished?
I'm coming here Monday.
Okay, so you're heading in, you can scan, you can scan it up, and you're coming in. That's not good, why? Tuesday's okay, that's okay, Tuesday, so we'll say Tuesday. All right, let me ask this one more time, is there anybody who has anything more for the homework? Number two.
Can you just kind of look back for a second?
Yep, I sure can. So two, so here, let's, let's work here. Okay, so here's the problem, essentially, it's, what we have is that f one, f two are Riemann still disintegrable, and then f one is less than or equal to f two, we want to show, show that the integral of f one A to B with respect to alpha is less than or equal to the integral from A to B of f two d alpha. Okay, give me one second to look at my notes, that's it. Okay, so here's what, what my suggestion is about this, is that what we know, so here's in hands, we know that this guy equals to, so this upper integral equals to the Riemann still disintegrable, okay? And also, the upper for f sub two is equal to the Riemann still disintegrable from f two d two. So it's enough to show this guy, this guy being the upper integral of f sub one d alpha is less than or equal to the upper integral of f sub two d alpha. So that's one way of looking at it. So look at it in terms of the upper intervals. And what the upper intervals would get us to look at, we'll be looking at those upper sums, okay? And then you're going to involve the themo's of upper sums, and that is one way of trying to do it, okay? You could also do it with working with the, the absolute, and then you're going to be working with supremums of the steps, but that's something I suggested. Is that okay with everybody? Anybody else with any questions?
This is an, this is just a quick side question, do we have any idea what the schedule is going to be next week as far as?
What worries?
Is it going to be, what worries, is it going to be the same time now?
I think the times will remain the same, I don't know which will come first. And I'm thinking, what I was thinking is, even though I said, maybe we'll move the test date, I'm thinking, if you guys can take it on next, the next time we meet is Friday, if you're able, able to take it, or you're in good shape, let's take it. But if you say, no, this is just too much, then I'll move the test date, and I'll give you different opportunities to take it. So I guess if some of you can take it that day, I'm here to get it to you. And if some of you say, I'd like it another day, or I need to take it earlier just to get it away from, earlier or later, to get it away from when I'm having other exams, okay? And you won't be getting, for those of you who take it at different times, you won't be getting the same exam. But you can let me individually know, but right now, we'll say, it's scheduled for next Friday. All right, then I'm ready to move on. And what I want to tell everybody is this, I wrote this study guide, and after I wrote it, you know, I might ask some things on there, I might ask some things on your test that aren't explicitly on this study guide, okay, I can do that, you know, that's kind of normal. But primarily, I'm going to stick to the study guide, okay? So a majority of the material's going to be from the study guide, and I don't say my opinion. My opinion is, the study guide makes the test manageable, it's dual. And so if, if I ask you two or three problems from, to prove things of what I'm telling you to prove already, one or two, two or three, something like that, I think that's very manageable, and those proofs are manageable. I went through them this morning, and I said, it's not so bad, that's what I was thinking. So I want to encourage you, say, this is not so bad.
This is not so bad.
I like that. All right, and I want to start off with.
Hold wait till I see the test before I say that.
You're looking at the study guide, Shannon.
I can do it.
You're looking at the, the study guide, Shannon, and so I want to tell you that those proofs that are listed there, that I want you definitely to do, aren't so bad. So I'm going to start with the, with things there, and I'm, I'm going to do them kind of a different order. One of the things, Chris, in terms of Riemann still disintegrability, was we have the definition, and I'm not talking about what the answer is for the integral, I'm talking about whether it's Riemann still disintegrable. And we have that definition, and that was, the upper integral is equal to the lower integral. How do we compute the upper integral? The upper integral is the fimum of all the upper sums, okay? And then how do you compute the upper sum? You know, that's with the, the sums of the supremums of the f of x's on the subintervals. I mean, it's complicated, okay? And that's why we don't do too many problems with this, okay? Computing this way. But another way, another way to prove that a function is Riemann still disintegrable, and we said this in the lectures, that we're going to use this theorem quite, quite often, is an hypotenuse statement that's the following. It says, if f is Riemann still disintegrable on A to B, no, it doesn't say if, it says f, that's when you've got a little blank spot in the study guide, because I read the f and then I just blanked it out, you know, whited it out. So f is Riemann still disintegrable on A to B, and listen, everybody, you got this in your nose, if you want to write it down, it's wonderful, but you already got it. And so I'm going to tell you, what I'm going to do is I'm going to be yelling at you and explaining it to you, and I hope to have your attention. And I think you get, right now, I think we, we say, we know this proof after another 15 minutes, in progressing, just prepare for the test, because that's what I'm expecting to do. Okay, so f is Riemann still disintegrable on A to B, you do whatever you want to do in terms of writing things down. If and only if, if and only if, for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a partition, so the partition depends on epsilon, of A to B such that the upper sum with this partition minus the lower sums with this partition is less than epsilon. Okay, so this is a fact, so I want to talk about how to prove it.
This will be on.
This has a possibility being on the test.
No, I mean, the video will be on blackboard.
This video that we're doing now will be on blackboard, and I hope I'm getting everything down, tell me. You didn't move the camera, tell me that, it'll be good, appreciate it. Okay, so here's the proof. I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about this. First thing I think of is an hypotenuse statement, okay? So we're going to have kind of two parts, it's like two proofs in one. And we can do the setup, we can say, let f be Riemann still disintegrable. And we can do the setup, we can say, let F be Riemann still disintegrable on A to B. I'm sorry, let me back up, let me back up. So here, uh, I think this direction is easier. And so that's what we'll start off with. Okay, what does that mean? What we're gonna do is, we're gonna assume, we're gonna let, uh, we're gonna, uh, suppose for E, for each epsilon, there exists a partition of A to B such that the upper sum minus the lower sum is less than epsilon. And so, so we let epsilon be given. And we gotta this partition to test this, okay? So we gotta this partition. Okay? All right, great. What we wanna do is, we want to show uh, F is Riemann still disintegrable. Okay, that's what I was gonna do. How can I show that F is Riemann still disintegrable? Well, the way that I show that F is Riemann still disintegrable is to show that its upper sum is what, right? Equals its lower sum. That's what my goal is. Okay, Shannon? The upper sum equals to the lower. Not upper sum, upper.
Yes.
Upper what, right?
Intervals.
Intervals, yeah, I shouldn't have said sums, okay? Okay, okay. All right, um. Okay, so here's what we notice. Okay, um. Note. That we have, um, that for this particular partition, okay? I'm talking about the partition for the epsilon we're being given. Okay? Uh, note that the lower, uh, sum, okay, that's going to be less than or equal to the supremum. Now, this, this partition I got is for, this particular epsilon is given to. But that's gonna be less than the supremum of the, of all partitions of the lower. Okay, you know, what I'm trying to say is, this is one of the guys that's involved in this set. I'm, I know names are blocking. This is one of the guys in this set that we're taking the supremum over, so supremum's gotta be there. And what is this equal to? This is equal to the lower sum. I mean, lower interval. Okay? Now, the lower interval is definitely less than or equal to, uh, the upper integral, which is equal to the thema of the upper sums. That's overall the. And the thema is gonna be less than or equal to the upper sum for this particular. No. You know, if you wanna put piece of 1 here, to say we're working with a specific, uh, partition, you can. What partition? We're working with the one that's for this given epsilon, okay? Okay. Someday, I'm gonna die a white lung, I'm telling you. Okay. All right, now look. Since the upper piece of 1, F alpha, minus the lower piece of 1, F alpha, is less than epsilon. Look, the distance from this guy to this guy is less than epsilon, okay? And if you take some numbers in between them, okay? Their distance from each other's gonna be less than epsilon. Is that all right? Okay? If the distance for me and Jackie is less than epsilon, it's definitely the case that the distance between, uh, Ru and Denise is less than epsilon. Is that okay? That's all we say. Okay, so so what we have is 0 is less than or equal to, uh, here, it would be the upper sum. I'm sorry, the upper integral minus the lower integral is less than epsilon. That's what I got. And that's for any fixed epsilon you give me. So really, the original part epsilon had, we had a, a partition that dealt with it specifically. But then we moved on to intervals that really don't depend on the, you know, their lower intervals and upper intervals, but they don't depend on epsilon. Is that okay with everybody? That's what we moved to. And so since epsilon is arbitrary, then this says, this distance can be made smaller than anything you want. So that means that distance must be 0. Is that okay? That's what that means. And so they, the epsilon greater than 0 is arbitrary, then that means that this upper sum is equal to the lower sum, or the lower integral. Upper integral is equal to the lower integral. And so F is Riemann still disintegrable. That's the first part. And I'm gonna summarize that. So in, in the backwards direction, where you're assuming that, hey, you give me some distance, some epsilon, I can find a partition such that, uh, the upper sum with that partition minus the lower sum is less than epsilon. That will imply that the upper integral is equal to the lower integral, because the upper integral and the lower integral is gonna be sandwiched in between that upper sum with that partition and the lower sum. And that means it's gonna be less than epsilon, and that's true for any epsilon, so any positive distance. So that means that they have to be the same. Okay, that's what we have. Now, now I gotta go the other direction. The other direction is a little longer in terms of, uh, words that we'll write down, but it's not, not so terribly hard, I don't think. Okay, so, uh, this direction, and here, we're, we're assuming, suppose F is Riemann still disintegrable. And what we're trying to do, we, we let epsilon be greater than 0 be given. What I wanna do is, we wanna find a partition such that, such that what? Such that the upper sum with that partition minus the lower sum with that partition is gonna be less than epsilon. That's what we're trying to do. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanna get out my notes too, just to make sure that I use the same thing I had before. But, um, here's what I'm thinking. What I'm thinking is the following. I'm thinking, uh, since, uh, the, uh, the, the integral from the upper A to B of F d alpha equals to the thema of all the U's of any, with any partition of F alpha. Since that's what that guy is. And that, that's equal to the Riemann integral, Riemann still disintegrable. That, okay, so what does this mean? This is the, the least upper bound. Okay, that's what that guy is. Is that all right? Least upper bound. It, this is the smallest guy that's bigger than everything that's of these upper sums. Okay, it's the smallest guy. Warren, we all right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's right, it's written on the board, I think. Okay, it's the smallest thing. So if you give me something just a little smaller than that, it's not an upper bound. That's right, right? So thus, here, the, the, the A to B, the, the upper integral of F d alpha minus epsilon over 2, that's a little smaller. Okay? It's not an upper bound for the sets of the U P F alphas. Okay, it's not an upper bound. And this is over all the, the partitions we could have of A to B. And that guy's not an upper bound. What does it mean not to be an upper bound? That means there's a guy in there that is bigger than it. Warren, something bothered you.
Why are you talking about upper bounds when it's the thema?
Uh, the definition of, uh, Warren, the definition of this guy.
Oh, right, right, the, the upper sum is the supremum.
Yeah, so the upper sum, wait a minute, oh, wait a minute, the upper sum has any of the supremum. But the, the upper integral is the thema of all those upper sums. Okay, that's its definition. All right, so this guy, this number isn't an upper bound, it is not an upper bound for this guy. What's that mean? I give you a number and I say, oh, compared to that set, that isn't, that isn't an upper bound. That means there's something in that set that is bigger. Okay? So there exists, there exists, Jackie, a piece of 1. You know what I mean by piece of 1, Jackie?
No.
A partition.
Bigger, yeah.
Okay, a partition of A to B such that that this upper sum with this particular partition, piece of 1, F alpha, I know, we can't read it on this part, I know. Is going to be greater than the integral from, uh, A to B that's upper of F minus epsilon over 2. This is all in your notes, okay? Is that okay with everybody? Now, remember that upper sum, because F is Riemann still disintegrable. That upper sum, what's it equal to? It's equal to the, not the upper sum, the upper integral. Yeah, it's also equal to the lower integral, but not only that. Remember, F is Riemann still disintegrable. So the upper integral is equal to the, the integral.
This is, uh, different than what we have in the notes.
Okay, how's it different?
Um, after we said that, uh, the M is equal to the, uh, upper integral is equal to the lower integral, the M is equal to Riemann. Then we went into, we had that F of X, uh, I mean, sorry, F of d alpha plus E over 2, epsilon over 2 is not.
It's not a lower bound. I, I, I'm not talking about that one yet. I'm talking about the one, the, the upper bound.
I'm still, I guess.
Which, what you said from the notes is accurate, that, that's correct. I'm not looking at that part of it.
Yeah, I know, but I'm still, I'm still a little bit off here.
Okay, do you want me to look at it with you for a second, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yes, no problem.
Cause the definition of the lower here, and that should be an L. That should be an L.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Okay.
I'm wondering, maybe.
Okay, so here.
Should there be a bar here? Is that what I'm thinking now?
Okay, so, so what you just said, um. So this guy is, uh, oh, I've made a mistake. You're right. Wait just a second, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm in the wrong. Okay? You're right, thank you very much, Chris. I wasn't paying enough attention. I'm in the one that's in the wrong. We'll go back, excuse me. Thank you, Chris. And I'm glad. So here's what's wrong. This is, uh, this is an thema. So I shouldn't have been talking about upper bounds, that's right, Chris. That's right, Warren, that's what you were thinking.
Yeah.
I didn't understand your, your confusion or your comment. Chris, thank you very much. You helped. Look, we're talking about the thema, I don't know what I was doing. So this is the thema. That means it is the greatest lower bound, that's right. It's the greatest, uh, uh, lower bound. So, uh, it's the greatest lower bound. And that means anything bigger than it is not a lower bound, that's right. So here, this should be changed, I made a mistake. It's not a lower bound. You're right, good. Yeah, I didn't look at the thema as well as I should have. Okay, so this guy isn't a lower bound. Okay, it's not a lower bound.
So all those U's should be changed to L.
Uh, no, no, this is, this, this is a lower bound, okay? And, and we're talking about for U's, that's correct, for U's, okay? We're talking about the thema for U's. Okay, so this is not a lower bound for this guy. Okay, what's it mean? If you give me some number, I say it's not a lower bound, that means there's a guy bigger than here. Okay, so there dissipates, so one says that this is less than this. So change that to a plus. Thank you very much, Chris, thank you very much, Warren. I wasn't paying enough attention.
And it becomes less than, and then it's plus epsilon over 2.
That's correct. That's right, thank you. Good. Now let's continue from there. And good, thank you, Chris, that's right. Okay? Okay, so the thema is what I failed to concentrate on when that, that's what we began. Well, that, um, that upper integral, what about that upper integral? It's the same thing as the Riemann still disintegrable. So I get to make this comment. So this upper P1 F alpha, okay, is going to be less than uh, the integral from A to B of F d alpha plus epsilon over 2. All right, i- is that all right with everybody? I have that comment. That's a good thing to have. All right, good, 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 good. Okay, now, we can also work with those, uh, uh, the lower integral, okay, the lower integral, I'll do that in just a second, too. Okay? All right, so, uh, so for the, for the lower intervals, uh, we have since the supremum, script P, of the lower sums, P F alpha, is equal to this lower integral. So what is this? This is the, I'm gonna say it right, thank you, that's not. It's the least upper bound. Okay, the least upper bound. And so it's the smallest thing that's bigger than every, this is the smallest thing that's bigger than every lower sum. That's right. It's the smallest thing. Okay? Okay, so if you give me something a little smaller, it's not a supremum. Mine's a longer 2. It is, it's not a supremum, it's not an upper bound. It's not an upper bound for this set of lower sums. That's what we have. What does it mean for this number not to be an upper bound? That there's some guy in here that is bigger than it? That's right. So there exists a partition, we call it piece of 2, of A to B such that such that the integral, the lower integral of F d alpha minus epsilon over 2 is less than this particular lower sum. That's right. So I'm gonna write this here fairly low, uh, low here. This is an F here, I forgot the B. So make that change. What can I replace this lower integral by? Just the regular integral, because I know that it is. That's right, Riemann. That's right, Riemann still disintegrable. So what we have is the regular integral of F D alpha minus epsilon over 2 is less than this lower. Is that alright with everybody? Alright, good, 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 good. Okay. Okay, so we've got these two separate partitions. So what we do is we look at their refinement, okay? So let's P star be equal to P1 union P2. Okay, so here's what we have. Uh, what we have then is the upper sum with this refinement, F alpha, that's less than or equal to the upper of P, whatever I called it, and I still have it right, I've written it down here. P1F alpha, which is less than this epsilon, I'm sorry, this integral from A to B, here's the upper, but I will place it into the regular, of F D alpha plus epsilon over 2. And that's what we have. And.
Can you explain a little bit while the, um, the partition of a common region is less than or equal to?
Yeah, with the upper?
Yeah.
The upper, okay. Okay, uh, and here's the, uh, here's the, the reason, so, Chris, uh, here, what's happening is with this guy, the partition P1, here's A to B. And let's say I just got two guys, X1 and X2, who's X1 probably, who's X2? Here's a way of thinking. This is the fifth thing to be asked about. Very good. What is this upper sum? It's the, the max value over here times this distance, the max value over here times this distance, the max value over here times this distance, et cetera. It is the supremum of those, okay, that's why I thought max, I should say supremum, okay? Let's look at this guy for a second. Here's A, here's B, I'm gonna say we got X1, uh, maybe X2, uh, X3, X4. Now, just, let's look at this one part, okay? Uh, uh, maybe, maybe this X1, this guy and this guy correspond. Let's think of these two being the same for a second, just for a second. I've added another point, just one more point. This is fine. Okay, you see this upper part, the biggest part over this region, everybody? It's a good thing to talk about, the biggest part over this region, okay? What do you expect it to be in comparison, uh, well, the biggest part over this region has to be bigger than the biggest part over just this region, bigger than or equal to, et cetera. So for this part, we got something small, et cetera. And then maybe to get this guy, we got the same one, okay, is that alright? Is that okay? So just in comparison, that part, Chris, that's enough to give it to us in terms of looking just at this part. So look, when I take this distance times this bigger number, that, that's gonna be bigger than that same distance, if you will, times, well, I should say, it would be, I'm sorry. The sum of this number times this distance with this number, with this number times this distance is going to be less than this number times this distance. See, this guy was bigger for a longer period of time, it's like you're driving, okay? You say, okay, you're driving, I drove 60 miles an hour for an hour. And this person said, well, I drove 60 miles an hour for half an hour, but then I was down to 50. Is that okay? That's the comparison. Is that alright? And that's why the refinement, upper sums are less than, uh, just with the regular, upper sum without the refinement. That's the reason, I hope it made sense to you.
Yeah. I was thinking union would be bigger, but I understand that.
Good, it's a good thing to ask about, okay? It's a good thing. Okay, that's what we have. So we have that and, um, so here with the lower sums, we had to switch it down, uh, with this refinement, we have the integral from A to B of F D alpha minus epsilon over 2, I'm looking right here. Okay, that's less than, and I think this is, uh, less than this lower of this piece of 2, F alpha, but that's gonna be less than or equal to, um, this lower with the partition of the refinement, et cetera. And it's the same type of thinking, Chris.
Same type of thinking.
Chris, in the comparison, let's just look at some distance here, A to B, I'm just gonna put it up into, uh, to no regions, just A to B, okay? And, uh, so this guy, here's, here's the, the smallest value takes on, okay? If I look at this guy from A to B, and I just have one value more in it, and I say, well, look, what's the smallest value that F takes on over this region? Well, maybe it's bigger than, than this guy. And here it's equal, these two things are the same, et cetera. Chris, the smallest value takes on from A to B is definitely going to be smaller than the smaller value, uh, takes on from A to X of 1. Okay, smaller than or equal to, so I just made this one have to be a little bigger, and then maybe this one's the same. And so now, when you look at, when you look at adding, um, here's just one term, when you look at this number times this distance, that's gonna be less than this number times this distance, plus this number, that same number, times this distance. Chris, I'm gonna say something this way, I think about. Here I did bad, here I did bad. Here I did bad for longer. What's smaller? The one that I did bad for longer? Does that make sense to everybody? So I'm thinking of the minimum is bad, kind of, you know, kind of my way of thinking of things. Is that alright with everybody? That's exactly what I'm thinking. Is that okay, Chris? Okay, now, that's what we have. Okay. We're almost through with proof. And those that have gone through this much of the details, and do it, they're not trying to stay. That's why I had to, thank you, Chris, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so, so we have this, uh, this type of scenario. Okay, um, so.
Doctor, where did you hear that camera's not moved?
Okay, okay, so let's move that. Good. I'm coming the wrong way. Good, thank you. Okay, remember, we're trying to show that, uh, there's this partition such that the upper sum of with this partition minus the lower sum is less than epsilon, that's what we're trying to do. Okay. So here, uh, uh, what do I, what do I need to do? So if I, uh, if I look at this, uh, this upper sum, I'm gonna look at it for a second. I think I'm gonna string together some inequalities, so give me a second. Okay, so here's what we have. This upper sum. So the upper sum, let me write this down, of F out, this part. Is less than let me see what I've got written down. Let me look, less than okay, alright, alright, so I got it. So the subsum is less than this, A to B F D alpha plus epsilon over 2, okay? Okay, which is, uh, less than, which is less than this guy right here. Um, which is less than, if I add epsilon, uh, oh, to, to this part, okay? If I add epsilon to this part, I get exactly this, et cetera. If you add epsilon to, epsilon to this part, you get exactly this. And so I'd have to add epsilon to this part, et cetera. So this is gonna be less than L piece of 2F alpha plus epsilon, which is less than LP star F al, uh, alpha plus epsilon. That's what we have. So we look at these two statements, we have this, okay? To get epsilon over 2, here I have to add epsilon, so I get this. So this says, uh, that the upper with this partition, F alpha minus, uh, I'll just write down one more second. And here this is just gonna be less than, okay? Less than P star F alpha plus epsilon, okay? So I just took out the middle part. So if we subtract the L from both sides, here we'll be getting, this upper sum minus this particular lower sum is less than epsilon, and that's what we're going to show. Is that okay with everybody? You sure haven't done. So less than 2. Just give me a sec, correct things down. The next thing that I want to do is to, I want to go back to the tables. Here, because I have a mistake in the notes, so I'll make that correction.
Do you know what video that came from?
The which one, the tables? Uh, no, maybe not off the top of my head, but it's easy to look up because we have that.
Video 6.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's, but it's easy to look, all of them are easy to look up because we have that video summary, so if you're a whiteboarder, you just slip on it and it tells you what things are. Okay?
Yeah.
Now that means I'm probably using that actually. Wait just a second before we move on, I want to give myself a second, just to look at things, and for you guys to look at things. Okay, look, what I think in looking back at this proof is the backwards direction is easy. If you, if you're the, uh, let the proof that kind of, for each epsilon, uh, we have that the difference, that there exists this partition such that the difference between the upper and lower sum is less than the given epsilon, I can show that the lower integral is equal to the upper, fairly easily. The other way is a little bit more difficult. And so for me, what I have to remember is that we've got to get involved, uh, what the what's the lower integral and the upper integral are equal to in terms of, uh, the lower integral being equal to a supremum, the upper integral being equal to an infimum, and working with getting a little smaller than those, or bigger than those. Okay? Working with those guys. And then we have to keep looking at what we're writing down until we get down to, uh, some statement, some, some group of inequalities, that if we kind of string them together, and I say kind of, so I got these two inequalities here, and when I strung them together, we had that the refi, the upper sum with the refinement was less than the lower sum with the refinement plus epsilon, and that generated what we wanted. Okay? So that's the way that it goes. Is that alright with everybody? Okay, look, I definitely want to get to that tables there. And I'm going to go with you, and, um, I'm gonna correct those, like I said, those correct, uh, those mistakes that I made. So this, you know how I said, really, writing something down, that, that's great, but not necessary on certain parts beforehand. On this part, I want you to write things down because I made a mistake, they're very small. Yes, they're very small. They're wrong. You know, Chris, before I get to this, you had said something about these refinements, and we got a statement. So give me a second. So if we have P and refinement, then we call piece of 1, piece of 1 star. And what we have is L of piece of 1 with F alpha is gonna be less than or equal to L of piece of 1 star F alpha, uh, which is less than or equal to the upper sum, with piece of 1 star F alpha, uh, which will be less than or equal to the, uh, upper sum, excuse me, with piece of 1 F alpha, this is something that we have. It's true. And it goes to what was said over here on this board with, with you, and so I'm glad that you got us to look at it.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, of course. Well, I was saying that it was something that was connected to the, to the, to the statement over here that we made, so that's what I'm reading, it's not something with the, the tables here yet.
Okay, that's what.
Yeah, I'm just writing it down before we move on to it. It turns out, in one of the proofs that we did, and I can't remember which one it was, but essentially, I, um, had some statement that said that, let's say, the upper with P, P's, but each one of these P's contains some, some number, let's say C. And each one of the P's that I looked at contains C of F alpha. If I looked at that, and I, and I said, look, I'm making a requirement here that the P's have to contain this, the P's, they're partitioned, you're breaking up A to B, okay? That they have to contain the point C, is that okay? So C is one of the, every partition I'm looking at over there, it has to contain C, does everybody understand? And when I, I, one, one proof, I'm using this fact, I didn't really point it out, that the infimum over this set of all the P's, not just all the P's, but all, I guess I could write it this way, all the P's such that C is an element of P. This is equal to the infimum of all the upper sums of PF alpha where, where this is any partition of A to B. I make that statement, I, I use that type of idea in one of the proofs, and I didn't really point that out so much. I'm gonna take a second to point it out here. And look, here's, here's, here's the, the kind of reason why, um, this guy right here, this set, contains all of these. So the infimum of all this guy is gonna be less than or equal to the infimum of these. So here's what I'm saying, in, in analogy, this set is bigger than the set, et cetera. So if we say this, as an analogy, please forgive my analogy. as an analogy, please forgive my analogy. The, if you look at the infimum of all speeding tickets taken over for each individual in the world, that's going to be less than or equal to the least number of speeding tickets that any of us have. Is that okay? That's all I'm saying. Okay, so, this guy being less than that guy's easy. Why is this guy less than or equal to this guy so that they're equal? And the reason is, is that, look, for anyone you give me here, I've got one over here that is less than or equal to it. Because no matter what you give me here, okay? I can get smaller than it, or less than or equal to it by just adding C. Is that okay? That's what this part gives us. Is that all right with everybody? And so, that's huge one time in one of the theorems, even though I don't really emphasize it. All right. Okay, let's go over that Taylors theorem. Okay, what is Taylors theorem? It has to do with this polynomial approximation, so here we have, we have Taylors theorem. So, some corrections. Okay, so this, you may can just look in the notes and go from there, and I'll show you where the corrections are, two of them. So, here we have, suppose, suppose F is a real bag of pumpkin on A to B. And such that F prime, if you will, all the F sub n minus 1, all these guys. Really, it's good enough just to say this one, F sub n minus 1. So, that's the n minus 1 derivative. Is continuous. So, this part isn't included in the statement, but it's implied by the statement. If this is continuous, everything before it was. Continuous, yeah. It's continuous on A to B. Okay? And the n-th derivative exists on an open interval. Then, we're gonna let this particular, we're gonna let alpha and beta be two points in A to B. A to B. The two distinct points. Alpha and beta. And then, we're gonna let, so, Chris, when I just say F sub n is existing, that means that for every value in between A and B, F, the n-th derivative evaluated at that value. So, that's why I put down T. That's, we're gonna let P, this is polynomial, we're gonna call it P of T. It's equal to a sum, the sum is K runs from 0 to n minus 1, of the Kth derivative evaluated at alpha over K factorial times T minus alpha raised to the K. So, we're letting that be a function that we're looking at, okay? Then, there exists an X between alpha and beta. So, this is X in between alpha and beta. Such that, such that, so our M of beta will be equal to, I believe, P of beta. And then, it should be a plus, I think it's the n-th derivative evaluated at this X over N factorial times X minus alpha raised to the N. Now, so here, P of beta is just fine, X is fine. Here, this should be a beta, I mean, second. It should be beta. It's raised to the N. When I hit the video lecture, I had to go back and put that in there. Okay. The proof. Okay, I'm gonna look at this proof. Okay, what we first do is we define a number M, okay? That's the very first thing. So, we're assuming this information, and say, let M be the number defined by, okay, once we get the statement down, I think, we're gonna let M be is the number that defined by, okay? Right, so F of beta, so I'm looking at that. F of beta, I should say, is equal to, I think, P of beta. And this is the first mistake. Look, what I want to do is just replace this guy by M. And I had written minus in the proof, but it should be a plus. That's the first of the two mistakes. Okay, plus, M times beta minus alpha raised to the N. So, can you guys see where I am? So, it said minus, it should say plus. So, that's a mistake on my part, okay? And that's all we're doing, we're just trying to get the simplification of, the simplification of what this quantity's representation is, okay? Is that okay? So, we're trying to do.
So, then when you go to do the G of T, is it wrong there?
No, no, that's right, yeah, it's fine. And so, we'll look at that in just a second, okay? Okay, and I might have to just say, now. Okay, so that's a number, okay? Here's what we do, and we put, so now we're gonna look at the function. We put G of T equal to, okay, so here's what I'm gonna write, I'm gonna write down, F of T minus P of T minus M of T minus alpha raised to the N. Okay, so here's the thinking, ladies and gentlemen. What I'm simply doing is I'm creating a function, I'm calling it G of T, but I'm creating a function such that when you were to evaluate it at beta, you should get, imagine evaluating this at beta. We have beta, F of beta, that's right here, minus P of beta, minus M of beta, M times beta minus alpha raised to the N. So, essentially, if you put in betas and move all of these guys over, what would you get? Zero. So, what we're doing is we're creating a function such that if I were to evaluate at T equal to beta, we'd get zero, okay? That's what we want to do. So, here, we want to show, we want to show that M is equal to the n-th derivative evaluated at X over N factorial for some X in A to B. Now, where does that come from? That's coming from this line, line of what we want here, okay? Okay, this is what we want. Is that okay? This is what we want. And so, here's what I've defined M to be. It matches very closely to what we want. The only thing we need to make sure is this M is equal to the way that we've got this formulae. That's all I'm saying.
And it's equivalent to say that and to say for some X between alpha and beta?
Uh, no. No, it's not, thank you. This should be, some X between alpha and beta is what it should say. Not A and B. Thank you. I would be enough to, goodness, you wouldn't enough to say A and B. We're not talking about between A and B, we're talking about between alpha and. There you go. That's why. Okay.
I was just saying, I sometimes I just don't know what's equal.
Well, sometimes it's hard to choose if things are equal. Okay, so this is where we are, okay? Okay, so here, what we look at, we notice, note that the n-th derivative evaluated at T. Okay, so, we got this G of T, so I'll talk about this in a minute. Look, this is, if you will, it's like a sum. It's like a sum, you know, we have subtracting, subtracting. How do we take the derivative of one thing minus another thing minus another thing? We take the derivative of each part, subtract. So, this is the n-th derivative of T. Minus. That's F. Minus the n-th derivative of P of T. And then, when we take the derivative, what are we taking the derivative with respect to in this function? What's our variable? T, okay? T's our variable. So, M is a number. Alpha is a number, okay? And so, how do we take the derivative? Well, we use the chain rule, the power root, extension given by the chain rule. You know, I take the first derivative, I pull down the N. I take the second derivative, I not only pull down the N, but I'm gonna pull out an N minus 1. Okay, and I keep doing this. And so, what I'm gonna end up getting is minus, and this would be M times N factorial is what that would be. That's what I get. So, I'm gonna write that down. Let's just say for a second, this on the side, you guys don't have to write this down, but just to have this as an example. If I had M times T minus alpha raised to the third, and I'm gonna take the third derivative, okay? What's, if this is, you know, I call it some function L, L. What's L prime? It's gonna be 3M T minus alpha to the second, is that okay? What's L double prime? It's gonna be 6M times T minus alpha to the first. And what's the third derivative? It's gonna be 6M times 1, okay? Times, so I guess 3, broke that down to 2. So, that's the first derivative, second derivative, third derivative, which is second. Which is second. Yeah, I'm gonna have a T. Oh, wait a minute, wait, I'm looking at the derivative here. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm looking at the derivative here, bring down the 1, okay? And then, I T minus alpha to the zero. That's just 1, and that's what I have. So, that's what we get, yeah. That's right. Good, thank you. Okay, so that's how you can see and I was sort of worse. Now, we want to concentrate on the n-th derivative of P of T, okay? So, it works very similarly. So, note that P of T, well, it's equal to this sum as K runs from 0 to n minus 1, of the Kth derivative evaluated at alpha over K factorial times, here, T minus alpha to the K. So, what is that? Let's write out some of these terms. This is going to be, well, the zero derivative is just going to be L without taking the derivative, so that's alpha. Zero factorial is going to be defined to be 1. T minus alpha to the zero, that's just 1. Plus, the first derivative evaluated at alpha over 1 factorial times T minus alpha to the first. Plus, the second derivative evaluated at alpha over 2 factorial times T minus alpha to the 2. Plus, and other one more. The third derivative of alpha over 3 factorial, T minus alpha to the third. And we keep going till we get to the last term. What is the last term? It's the N minus 1 derivative evaluated at alpha over N minus 1 factorial. I don't have room, it's T minus alpha to the N minus 1. That's what's all there. Ladies and gentlemen, that's a lot, I mean, each term is kind of a perform here, kind of a perform that I did. Each one of the terms involved, kind of. Is that okay with everybody? So, here, I'm gonna take the n-th derivative, if you will, of each term, okay? Now, look, when the power matches the number of derivatives I'm gonna take, I just get the constant times the factorial, is that all right? But here, I'm gonna take the n-th derivative, n-th derivative. What's the highest power involved? N minus 1. And so, when I take the N minus 1 derivative, I'm just gonna get this like constant. And when I take the derivative of that, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get what? Zero, is that okay? So, the the n-th derivative of T is going to be equal to zero. Is that okay with everybody? Is that okay? Do we have any questions about what we're doing? Okay, all right. So, what that says here, from looking right here, because G, the n-th derivative with respect to T, that's the n-th derivative of L. And then, this part was zero, and it's minus M times N factorial. That's what we have. All right. Okay, so that's where we are, all right. Okay, now, here's what we want to do. We want to show. Can you say that part again? This part, yes. What I said was, looking from this line here, this, this line is a true statement that we have. And what I just showed was this part was equal to zero. And so, that means that this n-th derivative of G is really equal to this guy minus this stuff. So, this part is zero. And that's all I'm saying. I'm just gonna move just a little bit here to the side. Okay, so, here, what this means is, is that we want to show kind of erased it here. But remember, this is what we want our M to be, is that okay? This is what we want our M to be, it's right here off the top of my head. Here's M here, okay? So, we want to show that the n-th derivative of T equals to 0 for some T. of t equals to 0 for some t between alpha and beta. So that's what Denise corrected me on. I didn't leave it alpha to beta. Why? If this guy is equal to 0 for some t, for some t, x, whatever you want to call it, then when you subtract the nth derivative of L, you get a minus 1 over there. You divide by the minus n factorial, and you get S of n of something over n factorial is what m is. Is that okay? I mean, look, solve for m here, it's no problem, okay? If we solve for m here, that said, if this is 0, if this is 0, we solve for him here, it's going to be this guy divided by n factorial. And that's what we want. So now essentially, if we can get this to happen, we're done. Okay, that's what we're breaking down the problem to something simpler to try to accomplish. Okay, and I said for some t, but originally we called that, let's be consistent. I originally said in the proof, if we want to show it for some x, so I'm changing x. So just to be consistent. So here I should say x. All right. Note, and I think here's where my second mistake happened. You know that the, uh, the p are coming close to, that the kth derivative of p evaluated at alpha equals to the kth derivative evaluated at alpha. And that's for k equaling 0 up to n minus 1. So here was the p sort of on this side, okay? Talking about taking these derivatives. Is that okay? That's what we're talking about. And what I'm saying is, is this the same thing as when evaluated at alpha. It's the same thing as L's derivative, the kth derivative evaluated at alpha. Let's check that out just a little bit. I asked, so I hadn't written the derivatives down. It's okay. Wouldn't part, I don't think, of what I did in the proof. That's okay. As p of t, so I've got it over here. What's it equal to? It's really, if we write it out, it was L of alpha. And I did write it out once. I got it written out right here. Is that okay? And so I'll write that out again. This is with F prime of alpha. This is just for our own t minus alpha, our own kind of understanding here. F double prime of alpha over 2 factorial, t minus alpha to the squared. And then we'll go all the way up to plus the last term, which was the n minus 1 derivative evaluated at alpha over n minus 1 factorial. And then it was times t minus alpha raised to the n minus 1. And so look, if you just say, well, what about the 0th derivative? What about the 0th derivative? The 0th derivative means we don't take a derivative. But I'm talking about the 0th derivative evaluated at alpha. So I'm changing the t's to the alpha. Well, look, when you change the t's to the alpha, every term has this t minus alpha. Alpha minus alpha is nothing. Every term except the first term, which is just going to be F of alpha, okay? So it's true there. I'm, I'm just, you don't have to write this part down. I mean, then I'm just trying to justify in this line, okay? Is that okay, Brad, with that statement? And what about the first derivative? Let's check it out. What about the first derivative? What would it be equal to? The first derivative, this guy is a constant. You go away. This is a constant. I just wrote it down, F prime of alpha. And what's the derivative of this? Hmm, what's the derivative of this? 1, okay. Plus, then I write down this constant. And what's the derivative of this? It's 2 times t minus alpha to the
First.
First. And you know, it's got a bunch of other things. And each of the other things is going to have a t minus alpha in it. So when I evaluate it at alpha, I'm going to get 0 for most of the terms except for this one. Is that okay? And we keep doing that. And here, the 2s would cancel each other out. Is that okay with everybody? And so the very first term every time is going to be the kth derivative of F evaluated at alpha that does not have a t minus alpha factor with it. Is that okay? That's what's going to happen. And so the ones that do have a t minus alpha factor with it, when you evaluate it at alpha, t equaling alpha, you get 0. Is that okay? So that's how we get this statement. So this is just kind of a parenthetical thing. All right, that's what we have. So that's statement. I'm going to move the word just a second. All right, so here, I'd like to look at g of alpha. Now what was the g? The g, we've erased, but we had it down. It was the g of, the g of t's, we'll write it up here. G of t's. What was it? It was the, the F of t minus the P of t minus the m times the t minus alpha raised to the n. That's what it was, okay? That's what we had, okay? And so if I look at g of alpha, and I say, well, what is it? Okay, so it's going to be F of alpha minus p of alpha minus m times 0 raised to the n. Is that okay? But what is F of alpha in comparison to P of alpha? The same thing. So when I subtract them, I get 0. That's what's happening. And this is, of course, 0 times something. That's 0. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. Now, here's where I, I don't know if it's in the tape or not, but if I did g prime of alpha, what it was going to be was essentially, it's going to be in one way to think of it, it's F of alpha, F prime of alpha, minus p prime of alpha, minus, and this is the part that I don't know if I wrote down in the video close enough. But here, remember, I got to take the derivative of this, okay? I don't think I wrote that down perfectly. It should be m times n times t minus alpha to the n minus 1. And that's why I think the second mistake is pretty alpha. Yes.
Yeah, it should be alpha minus.
That's right. It should be. And, and that's why, if you look at the, I think I made a mistake right there, okay?
I had just m, but not times to n.
And it should be times. That's the mistake.
And then I just had to the n, but I may have just not seen the minus.
No, no, I didn't put an e. That's the mistake. So this is the mistake right there. Because that's the second mistake. I wasn't paying attention. I got to take the derivative of this guy. That's what happened. I didn't. I just wrote it down, evaluated the alpha without taking its derivative. That was the mistake.
Easy to do with being 0.
Say that again?
It's easy to do with being 0 always.
Yeah, it's still, it's still 0. So this is still 0. Is that okay? And we can keep doing this forever. Now, look, this is the way that I'm showing that, that the nth minus 1 of alpha equals to 0, okay? That's what we're doing, okay? All right, so that's what we have. Okay, now, Brad.
Why can't you just extend that all the way to just the nth derivative?
Because when I do this guy in times, I get m times n, and I don't have a t minus alpha there anymore. That's the reason. That's okay? And it's still kind of on the board here.
But it would be the n times n factorial, right?
Right, yeah. So I said the wrong thing. n times n factorial. But I don't get that 0.
Gotcha.
Okay, that's the reason. That answers the question. It's a good thing. Okay, now. Okay, now, um, our choice of m. Okay, what was our choice of m? How did you pick m? We picked m such that F of b, F of beta.
F of beta.
What was? F of beta is equal to?
We had g.
We had g of beta.
We had g of beta.
Is that what m was defined?
Well, no, you're right. The next slide, you said it was defined so that g of beta would be 0.
Right. So I think, I think we have it as F, uh, p of beta minus m times I see what you guys are saying, okay? Okay, that's right. You're right. That this times m times, uh, t minus, I'm sorry, m times b minus alpha is equal to m. And g of t is equal to F of t minus p of t. This should be a plus here. That's the same statement. So this would be minus m times b minus alpha to the n. That's earlier on. So I'm just explaining, I'm going to explain the next line. This is something we've already established. So I'm saying the choice of m, okay? So here's what m was defined to be.
This is the first line of the proof.
Yeah, first line of the proof. And then real close to the second or third line of the proof, we got this is what g of t is. Okay, and so then, uh, so that's, that's the information I'm just writing down as a side, as a reminder. That's what we have involved in our proof. And so if somebody says, well, what's g of beta? I said, what's g of beta? Well, that would be equal to F of beta minus p of beta. And it's like Warren said, I've said this earlier for this proof. It's a minus sign, thanks for that. Minus m times beta minus alpha raised to And this, okay, F of b is equal to this. So you just replace F of b what it's equal to, you get that this is equal to 0. So that's the reason we're making these choices. Okay. And that's what I got. Now, look. All these derivatives of g evaluated at alpha, what were they? It's on the board. All the derivatives of g up to n minus 1, they were 0, okay? What I want to concentrate is on g of alpha, g of beta. There exists, I call it x of 1, that's what they call it. Yeah, uh, between alpha and beta such that g prime of x of 1 is equal to, it would be, it doesn't matter really what's come first. G of beta minus g of alpha all over beta minus alpha. But what is that? It's 0, because g of beta is equal to 0 and g of alpha is equal to 0. And b and alpha are two distinct points, okay? So that we're not dividing by 0. So this is equal to 0. Okay. Is that okay with everybody? All right, so, you know, the first time for this line using the mean value theorem, I worked between alpha and theta. Is that okay? But now really, I've, I've got something about the derivative of g, it's an x of 1. And I know that the first derivative of g evaluated at alpha is 0. Okay, so now, I, I, the, I'm working with the, the mean value theorem applied to the interval from alpha to x of 1 or from x of 1 to alpha. I don't know which one's bigger or smaller. Is that okay? So I'll just say between, okay? So so by the mean value theorem. Like, I mean, there exists, let's say, an x of 2 between alpha and x of 1 such that that's alpha here, ladies and gentlemen. Alpha between, uh, there exists this x of 2 between alpha and x of 1 such that its derivative is equal to, its derivative, what's its derivative? The second one. That's right. And it's, uh, is equal to the first guy's derivative evaluated at maybe x of 1 minus the first guy's derivative evaluated at alpha, all over x of 1 minus alpha. And here, the tops, both items are equal to 0, so we get 0. And so we continue this process. Look, this is the longest of the things that I, that I asked. And it's got a lot of different functions to help kind of simplify the problem, but they're hard to remember. And so we're continuing the process. What happens? We get we get an x of n. And look, all these numbers, they're between alpha and some other number, but that makes them between alpha and beta. We get an x of n between alpha and beta such that, okay, so here, the one that we're going to do it for the, the n is where we've got this g, the n minus 1 derivative, okay? And so using the mean value theorem on the n minus 1 derivative, we get the its derivative, which would just be the nth derivative evaluated at this x of n. It's going to be to this n minus 1 derivative evaluated at x of n minus 1 minus g of, uh, the n minus 1 derivative of g evaluated at alpha all over x of n minus 1 minus alpha. And this is, both of these items are equal to 0. And that's what we wanted to show.
I don't think it makes a difference because I'm not really sure. But if I have, where I get x of n alpha and beta, I don't have beta. I have x to the n minus 1.
That, that is fine to have that.
The same.
No, ma'am, that's more specific. But if you're between alpha and x of n minus 1, you're between alpha and beta.
Because that, that's where our end.
Yes, and we're getting things in between. Uh, it's, it kind of, we were looking at A to B, but then we moved to alpha and beta. Yeah, that's right. That's right. And so really, I think it's better to say alpha and beta. That's what I think, because that's what we're saying in the proof we need to get. Is that okay with everybody? All right, I know it takes a long time. Is that okay? All right, listen, I'm going to say this again. We're done. I'm going to say this again. It's manageable. Manage it. Learn these proofs, go over them, try to say, why is this line true? What are we looking at that makes this true? What overall are we trying to prove? So this, for this Taylor's theorem, there's several times that we're saying things like, it's enough to show this. It's enough to show this, so that it kind of simplifies what we need to do to get the conclusion. Okay, listen, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to be here, I mean, next Friday. We're going to be scheduled to take the test, okay? I don't know what the order is. If you say, I don't want to take it on Friday, I want to take it on this day, I'm going to say, fine. That's what I'm going to say. And we're going to take it on that, your individual will take it on that other day, okay? Any questions to me?
Just can we have, what if we can test?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Come on, dear. Yes, ma'am. Anybody else who didn't pay? Anybody want to turn in their homework? Thank you very much. Sorry. Anybody else want to turn in their homework?
Just as long as I get back to my notes.